District Board and a presentation of the Boulder County Wildfire Protection Plan. Can we get a roll call?
Mayor Pro Tem Dickinson.
Here.
Councilmember Fahey.
Here.
Mayor Lay.
Here.
Councilmember Cooperman.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffner.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Kern.
It's not on the menu here, but if you could join me in the pledge for allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to take a moment to welcome the members of the Lewisville Fire Protection District Board. We have here tonight, we've got how many? One and the chief, alright. Are we expecting others as well? Okay. On this, there isn't, but I could speak up. Yeah, I was just welcoming the members of the Lewisville Fire Protection District Board. We've got Larry Bowden here, and of course, we've got our chief Wilson. But maybe, let's go around the table anyway, and everybody introduce themselves, and why don't we start? If you may. It's the one that's green, yeah, there's a little person under it.
Okay, I'm Meg Helford, Boulder County Wildfire Partners Team. I'm the Forest and Grasslands Project Coordinator.
I'm Caleb Dingson, I'm City Council Ward One.
Judy Kern, City Council Ward Two and a Marshall Fire Survivor. Thanks.
Josh Cooperman, also a City Council Member for Ward One.
Dietrich Hoffner, City Council Ward Three.
Barbara Hamilton, Ward Three.
Chris Lay, Mayor.
Deb Fahey, Ward Two, Council Member and also Fire Survivor.
Meredith Muth, Interim Deputy City Manager.
Okay. Larry Bowden, District Board for the Lewisville Fire Department and also a Fire Survivor.
John Wilson, Lewisville Fire Protection District Fire Chief.
Thank you very much. Before we get going, I wanted to, actually, I probably will hand these out, just as background to everybody. Send some around each side of the table for all of you. This is just a City Council work plan, just so you have some sense of the priorities that we have in place. And generally speaking, they're not in ranked order, but they are nevertheless there, and it's good to have those. I don't know whether we have a slide with those on them, but we can refer to them as we need to. I want to say before we get underway, that what we're going to focus on tonight is policy. Where we are, where we're going, and get educated, and we're going to take public comment. We're not going to be talking about individuals or except, you know, perhaps as though, as our efforts are organized. This isn't an effort to do that, it's to focus on the policies that we need to have. The ones we have in place, the ones we don't have in place, the ones we should have in place. And I'm looking forward to learning a lot, and I expect others are too. So with that in mind, the first thing we're doing is public comments tonight. And just my usual introduction to that, which is, you have three minutes to speak pertaining, if you can, to what we're doing tonight. But you don't have to, I guess, if you choose to use it for other purposes. You can pool your time with another, if you've got a person here in the chambers, or you've got somebody online watching in Zoom. You don't have to speak for three minutes if you don't, you don't have to speak for six minutes if you have somebody else. We ask that you don't clap or boo or whatnot, simply because we want to make sure that everybody has a chance to speak and nobody is kind of intimidated, which those kinds of things sometimes do to people who haven't spoken before. And I don't have a list of folks who are online, so I don't know how many are there. But at any rate, let's get going. And I think, do we have folks signed up? Please, call them out.
Tanya Samaru. Yeah.
If you could just state your name, and everybody coming up, state your name, and what's your phone?
Hello, I'm Tanya Samaru. Um, I just came from happy hour. Um, so I just want to talk about what you're starting to, you're having a discussion about the CWPP. And this discussion is all based on a wildfire risk assessment that was previously done. I came here before council and said, this is not the right scope for that assessment. I'm going to drive this thing out, right? Um, so, um, you know, the scope of the wildfire risk assessment was city property, for the most part, on fair weather days. And I'm not even sure the model is legitimate, because it excluded all the fuels in the city, which included neighborhoods. So, um, I want to point out that, as a little history and background, the design of a lot of what has been put in place was put in place by a previous city manager, who was kind of open about not thinking, you know, feeling we didn't need to do a lot of things that other residents didn't agree with him. Um, I sat in meetings with him, with other residents, where he was very dismissive about things like whether we need to coordinate with BVSD, whether we need to coordinate traffic management during an emergency, but home hardening. And he also, I'm sorry to say, quite disengaged residents. So, um, I'm going to ask that, I saw the city, previous city manager sit at the table with, like, the sheriff and the chiefs, and kind of not, you know, sort of say what needed to happen without, I felt like, properly consulting the expertise to the left and right of him. So, um, I just want to say that, um, one of the things he did was ignore an emergency operations preparedness assessment that the city did, and we have an assessment on record recommending the city do certain things that the city has not made their commitment to do. So, I just want to say, please, I hope we have a discussion where we get to hear how you're going to complete everything in the CWPP, but I hope that won't be the end of what we discuss. I hope that we revisit the scope of what the city has decided to do with regards to resilience and preparedness. And I also want to say that I'm a resident and a voter in two governments, the fire district and the city. And this is my fire district, this is my chief, and they represent residents as well. So, I hope that everything Lewisville does, we always treat them as our equal partners, because they've been very good about having a dialogue with us, and we appreciate their support. So, um, I'm going to encourage you to have this discussion today, and then let's come back and think big, and revisit the scope of what we said we're going to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya. Alright, this is the one time in the meeting we're going to do public comment, just to make it clear. I don't know if that was clear outside, I probably should have said that. If that changes anybody's mind about what they'd like to make public comment, please let us know right now. Alright, Meg, if you'd present, I understand, I appreciate your being here very much. Thank you, and thank you to the fire board, because I think we're going to get some really good discussion, as Tanya was just suggesting, so.
Let me make one comment real quick, if I could. So, I met with the city manager Fox about a month ago, and I brought it to her attention that my board and the city council has not met for many, many years, like, back probably 2016, 2017, somewhere around that time. So, I suggested that we probably should have just a meet and greet, and just kind of tell a little bit about the fire district to the city elected officials. It was suggested that we should probably bring in the CWPP, and I said, yes, absolutely. So, that's where this is all kind of started from, and I think the CWPP will take the bigger role in this. But at the end, I'll kind of share some facts and figures about the fire district, and then we can share your vision and our vision a little bit, so we can come up with a good path to go for.
Thank you, Chief.
Yep, thanks for having me here, Chief, and sorry, my back is to you, but my ears are open, so don't worry about that. I just wanted to show you, and this is my copy, it's a big copy, right, of the CWPP. And I have 12 slides with a lot on them, I don't expect you to read them, but there's a lot in there that I want to convey in how our county CWPP can really support the efforts for the city of Lewisville moving forward as a collaborative effort, right? So, again, I'm Meg Helford, Boulder County Wildfire Partners. So, what is the purpose of the county level CWPP? The last time I was here was two years ago, explaining how we were going to develop the CWPP. And if you look at this diagram in front of you, I want you to kind of think of it as kind of a funnel, right? And the county is at that top level, and that top level just only means that it covers the entire county. It's not granular, right? It doesn't go down to the neighborhood level, but, and then you have the agencies. That's something like the Fire Protection District planning, or even a town planning. And then when you go down to the communities, those are like your HOAs, and that is where they are really focusing on their community within their boundaries itself. And one thing I want to point out is, with the wildfire partners, we're really trying to encourage that focus, right? The county level is big, how does that funnel down to support that local level to start coordinating, right? And then down to those communities with community mitigation. So, the plan identifies risks across landscape, not neighborhoods. It identifies broad strategies, right, to protect lives, homes, and critical infrastructure. It is not prescriptive, all CWPPs at any level are not prescriptive. It's a living document for planning and implementation, right? I've been dealing with CWPPs for over 25 years, and our joke used to be, they're a dusty document. But I think now with the climate change and population growth and the size of fires, you know, we're pretty determined, or I'm pretty determined, to make sure that this document is implemented. Is it perfect? No, will we have changes? Yes, will we adapt? Yes, and that's what this is, it adapts to changes and events. Will we go and take a 500-page document and tweak it every now and then? A little bit, but we really want to, really what's in here is what we want to focus on is those management recommendations and those action items. It's not a regulatory or a legal document, it has no mandates in it. We do describe and discuss how important land use or wildfire building codes are in there, but it is not, it doesn't regulate, right? So, it is, it is a planning document. And really, what's most important, when you think of that funnel, again, is it really should link to that local level, right? How can we support, how can this large planning document with broad recommendations then be used by local levels to come together as a collaborative effort? Not just the Fire Protection District, but get the Fire Protection District, your local police, right? Your civic leaders, your homeowners, your open space, your land managers at that table to discuss, okay, how can we now take this to our level and develop a guiding document, right? What can we do at the local level? So, it's important that this is an umbrella, and that you can take from pieces of that and really kind of hone it to your, your boundaries of your city, right? It's really here to help you coordinate and identify and clarify roles, right? Who's doing what as a team, right? It takes a village. And then it really helps to meet the criteria of state, federal, and local grant programs. In all grants, in most all grants, it asks, are these projects or goals and objectives identified in a CWPP? A Community Wildfire Protection Plan or like document? So, it's really important, because that's how, if you're looking for funding, is, is that, yes, this meets this goal or these objectives for the city of Lewisville or for Boulder County, and that's how we seek funding. And it particularly important, important is, funding is, is a question. We have local funding, and we have state funding, but federal funding right now is in question. So, really important that the city from the Boulder County CWPP really focuses on really specific goals and objectives as it pertains to wildfire preparedness, right? For the city, right? So, we'll kind of talk about that. So, I wanted to bring up wildfire risk, right? And as I said, in that first slide, the CWPP, as it's being developed, we do a risk assessment. It is very broad, and I wanted to put the two, the two maps up there and kind of explain how this is interpreted, and understand where maybe there are some things that need to be improved, right? And we understand that as practitioners, that this may not represent, right? Folks who live here in the east go, wow, that's as low or moderate. Well, we just had the Marshall Fire, why aren't we high risk, right? And right now, the fuel models, the fire models, really, the vegetation is heavily weighted, right? And so, that's why you're seeing that red on that top map, that's the risk potential, because that's a lot of vegetation, right? As you transition into, into the eastern, the urban areas, that does not capture that. We know that, we know that this is an issue, right? But understand that low or moderate risk is still a risk. It's still very important to understand that. That, that doesn't mean you're not at risk, and that you should not do anything. That doesn't mean that you shouldn't be preparing and doing the things that you need to do. Risk equals probability times consequence. So, if you look at the low risk or moderate, right? I would, I would actually say that's moderate at the top. And, and, and this is being respectful for the folks who went through the Marshall Fire, right? The probability of a fire that magnitude happening in the east, it's low. It happened, right? It happened, but the consequences were very high, right? You're more likely to start a wildland fire in the west, right? Lightning, recreation, campfires, right? That's, we know that the percentage is higher, right? So, just understand, we recognize, and you all should recognize, that that is still an important risk. So, so until we can get those fuel modeling and that's at other higher levels to build in a different model, right? And, and other indices such as homes, density, et cetera, to run a different scenario, just know that everything is at a risk, that you're seeing that has that color, okay? And understand that this is county level, right? If you zoomed in at our, at our story map, you would be able to zoom into Lewisville and kind of look. Are you still going to see low to moderate, right? And again, I'm considering that moderate, you're going to see that that's moderate risk. Doesn't mean that's less important, that doesn't mean we shouldn't be taking action, right? The one on the bottom is expected risk to structures. This one bugged me big time, right? But we couldn't change the fuel model. If you flipped that around, the right side should so, show very, very red, deep red, right? Because of the population and the density, the structures that we have in the east of Boulder County. We know this, but so don't, we use this as a tool, right? And we know that we have to work with our, our partners, our state forests, our GIS folks, our IT folks, our few modeling scientists to help make some changes to those models. So, I just wanted to do that. And then just understand, risk is not the only criteria we use to make, that we make our management recommendations for, right? There are many other factors, and we'll go through that. And then, last but not least, for sure, is when the fire enters the urban area, right? When it transitions from the grasslands or the shrubs or wherever, it is not a wildfire. It becomes a wild, an urban conflagration. When you have that home-to-home-to-home ignition, right? So, I call the homes Fuel Model H. We actually have a Fuel Model H in our, in our, in our indices. But that's what I'm hoping that we can work with our modelers, is what does that look like when you put that as a fuel model? Okay? So, this brings me to, how did we create our management recommendations? And the CWPP really uses the National Cohesive Fire Strategy. That's how CWPPs came about, about back in 2009. And that's really where we focused the three buckets on. The fire-adapted communities, right? Your preparedness, your outreach, your education, your structure ignitability, your resilient landscapes. That's that mitigation, and then your safe and effective wildfire response. That's your alert and response, right? So, how did we create this? We formed a CWPP core team. Several folks in this room were a part of that core team. We had 15 core team, executive core team members, and then over 100 stakeholders of different fire protection districts, expertise, scientists, fuel modelers that we brought together, that we consulted with on the side to help us inform, how do we move forward with the CWPP? And last, and definitely not least, was public input. That really informed, when we were able to, at our community events, to really talk to the folks and get their, their concerns, their challenges, their fears, and integrate what we could into the CWPP. And then from there, along with our risk assessment, right? We were able to also look at, how are we going to make these management recommendations? As we looked at location of communities to large expanses of vegetation. That was both in the west and in the east, right? Critical infrastructure and resources, right? So, this helped us bring together all our core team with all this information to develop those management recommendations. And again, I'm going to stress this, they are broad, right? They're very broad. But from those broad recommendations, then folks such as the local fire protection districts and cities and civic leaders and all that can take that and break that down smaller to be very focused on, on your city itself, right? That's how we develop strategic projects, outreach and education. And then really what we're trying to get down to is that community, community mitigation planning, right? That community local level actions that you can all take. If, if we go about this at a home here and a home there, it's not going to do us any good. We really have to approach preparedness at a community level, right? And then we really work, what is that fire-adapted community model? It's civic leaders, it's the developers, it's the businesses, it's the first responders, it's the land managers, and it's the homeowners. It takes a village, right, to be prepared for any kind of event. And so, that big old model right there is really what we're trying to work, and we hope that we can get local level leaders in our communities to work at. We're working together as a collaborative process, we're partners, right? So, who is doing what, right? What's your local police department doing and working with your fire protection district? How are you pulling in the county office of disaster management or the sheriff's office? And how are you pulling all those partners together to really create a guiding document for the city of Lewisville or wherever you're at, right? So, this is, this is what we're hoping that we can all work towards. So, I have a story map, I won't go into it just due to time, but I will click on it hopefully. And so, you don't have to read this 500-page document, although I give Ann kudos for having the document and tag. That's pretty amazing. Let's see if we can get that. So, I'm going to, I'm not going to, I'm not going to go through the whole thing. Can y'all see that? That is, okay. Well, that's not working. It's showing on mine, but it's not showing on yours. Anyways, the Boulder County CWPP story map, I encourage all of you here in the town council and residents, if you haven't clicked on that yet, I would, I would encourage that you do, right? It really kind of pairs down what we have in this gigantic document, discusses risks, discusses management strategies and recommendations. So, now that I'm, I'm, I'm in, I'm in that one, but we'll see if we can move forward. So. Alright, I don't expect you all to read this. This is a pared-down version that is in chapter four, that you can click on the CWPP and go to the appendices, the online one. Click on that, you don't have to go through all pages. This will take you to, this is the county level, right? I just wanted to give you all an example of how broad they are. This is our goals with all of our partners. It's not just county, it's our fire protection districts, our office, everyone, right? And so, if we're talking about the first National Cohesive Strategy Bucket, that's that resilient landscapes, vegetation management, right? This is what we want to focus on. And I specifically pulled out just the east, not, not the mountains, right? Grasslands, shrublands, ditches, buffers, prescribed fire, right? This is what we're working with our inner, inner county folks and our municipalities and our other partners. What can we do to better prepare us, right? And then outreach and education. And many of these things on, on this one are, were already in motion as we were trying to finish the CWPP. And many we're working on to, to put out this year or next year, right? So, these are what we're trying to hope, our building codes. We just updated the county wildfire building codes, right? This year, we're working on a Realtor training and landscaper training. We want to better educate our Realtors on, hey, how can they recognize wildfire partners or mitigation that, that a homeowner's done? And then all the programs that we have, that we have out there, and many folks have taken part. And then all the programs that we have that we we have out there and many folks have taken part of. And especially that we really want to focus on here, you can take advantage of all of them, is that community mitigation planning. And then safe and effective, right? Again, these are all the things that we identified and prioritized as our management actions. Are things happening? Yes. Are all of them happening? No, right? Do we need to adjust? Yeah, but we're learning and we're moving forward. We're actually getting things in motion and getting things done. So then let's go to the Lewisville, you're in that part of that funnel, right? And so in the county CWPP, right? We had our broad recommendations. I also reached out and collected as many fire protection district or municipalities, a local level project, you know, wish list or management actions. That really often isn't done in a county CWPP. But I really wanted to get them in here so that we could provide that support and support those actions, even if they have to change and they may be changing, right? So this is broad level, what's in this plan now? And I, I consolidated and kind of talked with the chief and talked with the city and, hey, what do you want in here? What can we work? These are broad, can they break them down and make them more specific? We hope with the the expansion of the wild risk assessment to that will cover the entire city, that that these can break down a little bit more specifically. Takes time, takes patience, takes partners, takes team and capacity, right? So so that's, that's really important to understand. What have we got done, right? What has Lewisville got done that we need to to kind of tap on, right? Implementation of the wildfire risk assessment. And I heard, yes, that's specific to the city. And I know that they have plans to expand that to cover the entire city and the communities within. And hopefully, as a county, we can help, we can support that, right? We can help, help advise, and hopefully we get other folks to the table, not just the fire protection district or the the city leaders, but you're also bringing in the, you know, all those important players, right? That I listed, the land managers, the police department, the office of disaster management that can help you all focus down to this local level planning, right? They've mitigated two hundred and twenty acres this past year, twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. They've worked that this is their open space folks. And they've got plans for almost three hundred acres. Open Space owns two thousand acres, if I'm correct, in the town, in the city of Lewisville, right? So to me, this is a good start. And and understanding that open space has multi-management objectives, right? One of them is wildfire mitigation, but also wildlife, grasslands health, recreation, aesthetics, right? The list goes on. So they have to balance that. And I think they've done a good job in bringing grazing and mowing in into the fold. So I'm going to show you a map. Oh, I'm not, not yet. What has the city done or is planning to do? And again, this is what they're they're working on, but it's not limited to. And I won't go down that whole list. We're sure that these folks can answer some questions. But this is what they're talking about. And again, the county level CWPP got, got the motion going. Obviously, the Marshall Fire was the apex of it all, right? The county CWPP, and then we heard from the residents, what do you want? So we need to bring that down to the city of Lewisville and really focus on that. Can you be covered under the county CWPP? Absolutely, that's that. You you don't have to reinvent the wheel, but you can take bits and parts and really hone it or focus it to the city of Lewisville. So I just wanted to throw this map in there. This, this is from our Boulder County Fireshed Grassland Story Map. We are in the process of updating that. So right now, you're only seeing twenty twenty-three treatments. Our map is only as good as the data we get, right? So we can only, we can only go, hey, we need your shape files, we need your shape files. So we're working on a system of how we can collect that data and feed that into this story map. But I would be, I'm pretty psyched about what's going on here in Boulder County in the eastern plains, right? And and I think you should too, because a lot of the mowing and a lot of the grazing that has been implemented has been targeted specifically. Where can we be strategic around communities? Is it perfect and do we need to do more? Yes. Are we going to mow, graze, or do prescribed fire on all thirty-five thousand acres? No, we need to be strategic about that. But post-marshall fire, there's, there's action going on and there's people thinking about not just other management objectives, but wildfire. And how can they keep that ecosystem healthy, just like we do in a forest, right? Hey, we got to thin the forest, but how do we maintain forest health, watershed, wildlife? We have to do the same thing down here, right? That's why we live here next to these ecosystems, right? So I just wanted to throw that out there. What's our fire protection district doing? And I would say, chief, that that list is probably a lot longer. I'm like, hey, give me a list. I think the number one thing that they're focusing on is the expansion of the wildfire risk assessment. Outside of just what they identified in there, but expanding it. It can be their mini CWPP. They can use the county CWPP to pull and tug what they need. They don't need to reinvent the wheel. And again, I keep hitting on this, really pull together a collaborative, local collaborative team of all those important players and get their input on that wildfire risk assessment and expanding it out, right? Mini CWPP. And they're promoting resident action, home hardening and community planning and offering wildfire partners home assessment program. And I put a star by that because like I said, on your, on your small lots, dense communities, one, two, three, five, even ten out of a community of three hundred homes or even a hundred homes is not going to do anything, not going to do anything. We have to approach this as a community, right? We have to go at it, how many homes, especially on that front line next to open space, can we get educated, take action of home hardening, fire resistant, any kind of mitigation? So that that allows time for them safely to evacuate and allows time for our fire personnel to safely get in and and protect homes. Last but not least, again, we can't, we get motivated as public servants in our jobs because we hear from our residents, right? And so we got residents on the move here in Lewisville. And and they've been affected by the Marshall Fire, so they had good motivation, right? But we have some neighborhoods, some community leaders, and I cannot stress how important that is. We can't get, we can't get that community mitigation planning or even our wildfire partner programs or any programs that the city of Lewisville is thinking of, unless we have those community leaders. And we have some right here, sitting here behind me. We, our first post-marshall fire community, the cornerstone community has received their firewise designation. Now, that is extremely important to understand. I call it the first one in the east, we have a couple, but they're at the foothills. This is the first one in an urban built environment that has gotten a firewise designation. It's a national recognition program, right? It's voluntary, but it gets you a cool sign and it really gives you the tools to get your community motivated. It takes community leadership, right? So I'm excited and the fact that we've got one across the entire front range, I think that's pretty rare in an urban setting, right? So you had that motivated community, right? They took the Boulder County's wildfire partner community mitigation planning program, new last year, and took that with the guidance of our, of our program gal, Abby Silver, and really supported their effort, right? The city of Lewisville Colorado State Forest Service, that program runs through them. So that's huge, that's a, that's yay, right? There are things happening here in Lewisville that should help motivate all of you to make even more things happen. And you could just see what they've done, you know, in a short amount of time. They've adopted some open space, they had an ice cream party, they've been to farmer markets, they have a firewise newsletter, and the leadership really with some, some support from our technical expertise, created an action plan. That's pretty cool, right? And so of all these things, action in motion. I suggest we get that information out to all your residents of what's going on here and what has been completed and what you're planning to do, right? They can learn from us and they can hear snippets here and there. But there's a lot going on and there's a lot more that can happen, right? Down to that collaborative process that we would love to support and other folks support, where you can really show folks, hey, we have this guiding document, here's the the major role players, and here's how we're going to move forward, right? So good job, everybody. That's the end of my spiel. Here's, here's the links and and this is shared, right? But here's the links, our grassland story map is getting updated. But I suggest if you haven't looked at the county CWPP, again, you, I can't even lift this. You don't have to look at the entire document, you can go on and 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 access the PDF copy that lets you click in the table of contents. Go to chapter four, appendix J. Those are their management recommendations at a broad scale and at the local level. And then the grassland story map we're updating and we we hope to have that out soon. So thank you. And I am open to any questions or comments, if anybody has any.
I think we do. Councilmember Faye.
Thank you, yes. I'm concerned you're talking about fires that moved from a grassland, a wildfire, into an urban conflagration. And I've, I've heard a lot of conditions that that happens a lot with the ditches. And the ditch situation in this county is very confusing and difficult to manage. And so I'm wondering what we can do or what you can do to help us get those ditches cleaned out and not just for water, but get all the dead stuff out of there so that a fire doesn't go through that like a wick.
Yeah. So and I forgot to talk about this, great question. The county in the last six months has hired a ditch manager, program manager. It's based out of Boulder County Park and Open Space, right? His name is David Garcia. I'm sorry, I'm going backwards, don't get dizzy. And he's getting his feet on the ground, he's meeting everybody. He's, he's working, he's meeting all the open space folks, he's met us, he's meeting with ditch managers, right? And right now, I think they had for Friday a field, a site visit with the ditch folks and and city of Lewisville, open space folks for Friday for Davidson Mesa, right? So they're trying to prioritize. That's a lot of work, but it's a beginning, it's exciting, right? And I think they have to postpone it because of weather and I'm psyched because I couldn't make Friday, but now I can. So that's where we're at. There was a question by Joanne of whether or not the ditch, the ditch mitigation was only on county open space. I can't answer that honestly, but I'm going to find that answer out, right? I I believe it's across, across, there's hundreds of miles of ditches, right? So we're, they're prioritizing where ditches lead up, right? And where can we mitigate? It's going to take time. They're not going to be able to mitigate every ditch, but I do believe what they're doing is creating a map to prioritize ditches that lead into. But on that point, look at that little triangle up there, right? If you think about the Marshall Fire, we had extraordinary, extraordinary conditions that day. Middle of winter, drought, fuels and and the wind, right? We can, we can control the fuels to a point, but we can't control the weather and topography. So how does that relate to ditches? Is we've got to prioritize, we cannot mitigate every ditch. And and this is going to take a chisel, right? But we've started, we've started that. And we've got to prioritize where we can be strategic, those ditches are. It's not only the ditches, if we mitigate the ditches, you all and communities have to think about those cedar fences, right? We have to think about, you know, covering your vents. We have to think about situational awareness. We have to be, you have to do, one thing does not, nothing's a silver bullet. We have to work together. You got to get brasses, ditches in the unbuilt environment. And then we have to start together at the same time, thinking about the built environment. Again, I don't call the Marshall Fire a wildland fire. The minute it left the grasslands, it wasn't the flames that got your homes. It was the embers with a hundred mile per hour winds. If on that day, the winds would have had been ten or twenty miles per hour, we would have gotten a handle on it, right? We could have gotten a handle on it. So we have to work on both sides. Vegetation, work on that, right? And in the community in that built environment, so we can try to prevent an urban conflagration, that home to home to home ignition. But we got that person in place, we're excited.
Okay, Mike, the reason for my question, I guess it is, is that there have been discussions with city staff about who controls what part of what ditch. And some of it is city owned, some of it is county owned, some of it is by the ditch company. Some of them are on private land. And so I'm just wondering how we can coordinate so that the whole ditch is cleaned out.
It's complicated, just like land management is complicated in Boulder County, right? If you look at the open space, there's open space, there's ag, there's all kinds of different ownerships. We're going to have to work on that, I'm not going to lie, in all transparency, it's going to take some time. And and are we going to be able to say, hey, we're going to mitigate this many miles of ditches in five years? We have to see how we can work first with the ditch managers, right? How can we come to the table with them? And and then how do we connect those dots with the different ownership?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's a good question.
Other questions? Yes, Councilmember Cooperman.
I could just ask a follow up question. Maybe it's a crazy idea, but I'm not sure. Not in in the CWPP, but in another, maybe the grassland management document. One of the strategies that's mentioned is like green vegetative buffers. And I'm actually curious, could a ditch serve in that purpose since? I mean, maybe the water is not allocated sufficiently to serve in that purpose, but it's just a random idea that I was curious about.
So I'm not a, I'll be honest, I'm not a ditch expert. However, I have been out looking at ditches and that'd be tough. There, there's. As you've heard, ditches, the ditch managers have to get that water through. And we appreciate that, we need our water, right? We also have erosion, wildlife, all those things, just like everything, multi-management objectives. Some of the ditches I've looked at, I'm like, whoo. They're heavily, they have heavy vegetation in them, right? And there's a, there's a reason for that. But can we start by taking out that dead? Can we do that by maintaining the integrity of that ditch? We don't want to rip up the ditches and create flooding or other issues. You could bring that up to our ditch manager. I think that would be difficult though, yeah.
I, I just want to mention that there are other ways to manage the ditches besides taking out the stuff. You could also burn what's dead in it in a controlled burn. But then again, you need to know who owns what part of what ditch.
So, so the plan is, because controlled burning with the vegetation as is without doing any manipulation of it would not go well. There are, it would not go well. We'd have to mitigate that stuff out and either pile it, chip it and haul it or pile burns to, to do prescribed burning as the vegetation is in there, right? That would be very difficult. There are stream side management, best management practices that have, there's a lot of stuff that we'd have to follow to, to maintain that water, right? So we got to pull that material out away from the ditches. We love prescribed fire. It is an incredible tool, but in the ditches would be, i- if they're, if they're not an active ditch, that would be easier, right? But in an active ditch, you can't really put fire. We're all, and I've seen it, that the vegetation along the ditches, it's very heavy. So we'd have to pull that out. But keep talking about prescribed fire because that's a, that's a tough sell right now, right? Understandably.
Other questions, council?
Thanks very much, Meg.
You bet.
It's nice to see you here tonight, I appreciate it. And since you gave a shout out to the amazing residents behind you that are all members of the coalition, as so am I. Thank you for doing that and acknowledging to everyone here, the important role that they can all play in helping the fire district as well as the council make good decisions citywide. Thank you for that. So my question for you is actually, we talked about the acreage that Lewisville is already addressing with some level of mitigation. And whether that's through grazing or mowing, it's less than 10% of our open space. But as you said, it's really targeted based on recommendations that have come to this council a couple of years ago. And I think the, the understanding is that there is definitely more steps, greater recommendations of what we can expand it to. Seeing our neighboring communities and some of the actions that they've taken to address greater than 10% of their open space. Do, would you even know by looking at some of these areas and some of like the grassland story maps, recommendations that you could give us to help us facilitate, like which should 50% in those targeted areas versus only 10?
Yeah, this is where I think the, the city level with your wildfire risk assessment. You know, my recommendation is you take the city boundary and you look where the communities are. And at your level, you could, you could take, you could do a mapping exercise and go, hey, you can't, you can't mow and, you can mow and graze a lot and manage a lot, but you need to be strategic, right? So you could take in, in that wildfire risk assessment report that you have already, take that map and go, hey, this is a heavily, there's a lot of density here, right? So you might have a lot of circles around that boundary, but then that's how you prioritize. And that's how you bring open space to the table. You can't, you can't do that yourselves. I don't recommend that. And that's why through your efforts of updating that risk assessment is that you bring your local players to the table and, and have them help you with that, right? So that's what I would recommend. If you look at the city of Boulder's open space plan, they have the city of Boulder and they have where they have some priorities near some, you know, critical infrastructure and, and some density. That's how I recommend that maybe the, your efforts here is that you come together with a team to, to, to identify that and then work with the open space. And, and I've been talking with Kelsey and Nate, right? And they're going to apply for some strategic fuels mitigation grant monies to, to really uptick that. But again, I know that's, that seems like a small percentage, but I, I, I just encourage the positivity of that. They're actually, they're doing that with that, they're doing it with many goals, but now wildfire is right here, right? It's not here, it's here. So that's what I would recommend is really mapping it out for, for your, for your buffer here in the city.
Thank you. And then you also talked about the need for hardening, whether that's like hardening physical structures and the greater value comes with community wide hardening versus like sporadically or sparsely. Helps like set homes. You also talked about defensible spaces around that to help, help that. One of the things that I'm incredibly proud of the, the community and the council for doing is we do have a home hardening code that has been implemented citywide. And definitely, I mean, as was pointed out the other night, probably one of the most strict because it is applying to the whole city, not just at-risk areas. So we are trying to help once it gets to urban conflagration, to your point. But what, if you could kind of help us understand or help the community understand, what are some of the incentives, as you mentioned, for homeowners who may not have already done that? That hardening are not required because their home is already built? Efforts, so financial incentives that they can take advantage of now?
Great question. So we have our wildfire partners program and if, if you haven't looked at that website, wildfirepartners.org. Our rebate program, all of older county, right? Can take advantage of that. That is homeowners can go in and apply and there are five actions. They might be adding something else, but I, I, I can't say until they get approval for it. But five actions that you do around your home, right? And the rebate is up to $500. That may seem like something small, but it really is to get that homeowner or as a community thinking about what are the little things I can do to prevent those embers igniting my home? One is junk your juniper. We know that builds get, homes get built with lots of junipers. They're easy, they grow in drought, right? They're, they're cost effective. And that's not the juniper out in the corner of the yard. It's that juniper that's right next to your home. And junipers, the reason why is because they're hard to start on fire. But once they start on fire, they have resins in them and we call them firebombs. And so they burn very, very hot. So it's junk your juniper, even if that's one juniper and then the, the homeowner might go, ooh, I, I want to take the other one out. So it's to get them, so right? Junk your juniper, cover your vents, right? Screen your vents. So they could go out and, and get that, that screen. We have recommendations or they could hire somebody to do it properly, right? One of the, the easiest ways for embers to get in is through those, those outside vents, right? Your first five feet, that first five feet, if this is your home, I got a short arm. But if this is your home, right? And you're walking along and you've got mulch or you've got veg or you've got leaves. We really want to recommend folks that, hey, replace that with some pea gravel or hey, take that, again, that juniper. Do something, that first five feet. And I, I can show you a video and I'm sure folks have seen those videos. That ember flying in that little pile of leaves that was left over from the fall got started and they went up under, right? That stopped, the first five feet, right? And then the, the first five feet, fences or fuses. And we saw that there is, there's evidence with the Marshall fire. Lots of cedar fences, of course, that's economical, right? But even if that homeowner could take that first section of that wooden fence that leads right to their house, either out, they got a dog, you know, gotta put something else there, right? Is that easy? No, but it, we're really trying to work with some, some builders and, and, and other smaller contracts to do that. So that, that's one program that folks can take advantage of. There's, we've got the community mitigation planning, right? And then, so we give the technical advice. We help that community do, you know, assessment, guide them through that assessment and prioritize action items. And then that community planning, all that assessment gets loaded into the firewise portal. And then you wait, do I get designation? And you get designation, you have to keep up with it though. It's an annual, it's an annual thing that you have to do. Again, it's voluntary. There really is a way to get your community involved. What we're working on for the county for wildfire partners, not done yet, is we're hoping to offer a $20 per household in a commune, a firewise community. Can't get it unless you're firewise designated. $20 per household incentive, right? So let's say you have 100 homes, you get $20 per from the county. And then that is to motivate you to hold, maybe you hold a barbecue, right? To get everybody there. Maybe you're investing in a chipping event or a community-wide event, whatever, right? That's to incentivize. That's the first ever, right? Firewise doesn't come with any, the firewise program doesn't come. So we felt like, wow, we need a, we need a little kickstart there. We're hoping to rule that out this year. We're hoping to rule that out. We're trying to figure out the financial part, who, 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 who's the treasurer of that money? Who do we give it to? So we're working on that. We have our outreach and education program and I know Abby's been out here a lot and, and working with you to do events, right? To do presentations, to do field trips, to do community events, to, to really start talking to the folks. We have our community chipping program. And that's a little harder in an urban area. Nobody's gonna like chop down their maple tree to do the chipping. But maybe as a community, there's a lot of dead decadent stuff hanging out. As a community, you're making those piles. We provide the forestry contractor to come in and chip and haul for free, right? You have to do the work, but we, we help you get rid of that material, right? We have our youth program that I've talked to Kiana about. And that's really focusing on the underserved, yes, we can say that here, the underserved communities, right? Those folks who maybe don't even know about fire and don't even care about fire. But maybe they need a lot, those mobile home parks, those senior areas, those folks who may not speak English and are just worrying about putting food on their table. Go on our website, we've had some successful stories. Ponderosa Park, San Suzy, right? Those are mobile home parks that we went in last year with the youth corps, cleaned out clutter like nobody's business. And that's another thing, clutter. Yes, I'll get to those two by fours by my house, right? So we went in with that youth service program and provided that service for those folks. So that's many, and then we have the strategic fuels mitigation grant program. That doesn't really help the community. We're really focusing on helping the open space resource managers, giving them some funding to increase what they can do, right? So that's many of the things that we can offer and, and that you should take advantage of, right? So, good question. Maybe too much detail for you.
Never, thank you.
Councilmember Cooperman.
One follow-up to start with. For the. For those community assessments, what, you know, like, what, what, what would count as a community, you know?
Very good question. So you have to apply. You have to have at least, if you don't have like a formal HOA, you have to have at least eight homes. They can't be here and there, they have to be in a group to apply, right? You go online and you apply on our online portal. And then yes, get a schedule, you schedule that with Abby or even myself if, if she gets, you know, I, I'm doing the west in that, she's doing the east, right? And then you, you walk that. I hi- I highly encourage, this is what I'm trying to do in the west, is that you include your fire protection district. If they have the time, sorry, if they're small. If they can be along or walk, right? And help and really they know and they're, then they're like, oh, okay, this is like cool. So I would say if you can get them there and they, and they have the, the capacity to do that, walk along with you, right?
And then another question. I'm wondering, are you doing contractor training as well, like for? So that people are aware how to cover vents correctly or, you know, that, or, or just be aware of, you know, what materials are?
So on our website, on our website, we have a lot of help documents for the vents and the type, the mesh, the eight inch, the one eighth inch, right? We have a list of where to get that. We haven't really thought about how to do that, but that's a great ideal. I can write that down as maybe we can do that outreach and education. Maybe we could do a demo like here, you know? Climb up on your ladder, make sure, sure someone's holding it and you do this, right? So how to properly install that kind of thing. I, I think that's a great idea and that's maybe something we can work with the city to, to do a demo day on that, that'd be kind of fun, great idea.
And then maybe two other questions. So one of the last appendix in the CWPP has a list of specific actions for different communities. And I'm curious, how were those lists compiled, like, yes, basically?
So at, at, and maybe, so that's appendix J. Normally a county, a CWPP wouldn't have that information in there, but I felt it was important to include it. If, if, if you look at Boulder County, we are CWPP forward. A lot of fire protection districts have CWPPs, right? So that helps them get funding. So I thought it would be good, so I collected that data. I knocked on every, do we have everyone's? No, but we got a pretty comprehensive appendices of where work, what their goals are, right? So I collected that data. I, I sent out the sheets, I talked to the people and a lot, some of this stuff is recognized in those local CWPPs. But I also wanted to pull in folks who aren't, have a CWPP specifically, so we could go down that funnel a little farther.
And then I was wondering, can you give us kind of a brief overview of how the ballot measure money is being spent? And maybe how it will be spent in the future?
Yeah, you know, and I think we're getting ready to put out, put out a report, right? I don't have, I honestly don't have the, I, I know we have it broken down, right? But, so I can't give you specific numbers, but I'm, we're happy to send that out to the council. But wildfire partners gets a chunk of that for these programs, right? For all the programs listed in there, that is funding for the pro, to operate those programs, oversee those program, the capacity for that. The capacity for that. We also uh help fund the ditch manager that we put in place. And this is one A, one B is different, that's for for uh the emergency management. Um, and so I'm happy to, we're getting ready to put out the report. Happy to to throw that pie chart out when we get it for folks to really see it. We want people to see where the money's going, so. Good questions.
Other questions from council? I have a couple. There's the the five hundred dollar grant that you talked about. Um, and I've heard various things about it. Um, when it ends, when that program ends, is it continuing?
It 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 goes in a hibernation for the winter, right? Cause it's just real hard to to manage it. Last year was the first year and we're we're upping it. Uh, we're upping, we're reopening it up this spring. So we hope to have perpetuity with that. And we're probably improve it, right? We're we're learning, learning, and we're adding some other actions. We're also encouraging like for lions out there, lions is actually. Doing a small match to that rebate, so it's a thousand, it's the first ten people. It's gonna be a rush, right? But they're matching our five hundred with five hundred, so that's a thousand bucks. So again, the city. You know, maybe that's a consideration to motivate folks. We know five hundred do- dollars. Maybe a little drop in the bucket, but maybe there is something that you guys could consider in a a a match for a year. Or for a certain level, right? So yeah, that's, we hope to to keep that going and 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 enhancing it along the way.
One other question that I was gonna ask here. You know, you you've talked without without using the term about defensible space. That's something and and we may get into this a little bit with the uh talking to the fireboard here, but. How important do you think that that is for for our city?
Very. And we have to think about defensible space differently than we talk about it. It's the same, it's the same concepts as we talk about in the mountains. When we talk about defensive space, we have three zones. Zero to five feet is extremely important. Maybe even zero to thirty feet is extremely important in these high-density, small lot homes. So yes, so that's why that rebate is that's that first five feet. We really want people to think about their homes and we hope like, hey, we just. We just screened our vents, what else can we do, right? To get people thinking, oh, these are, these are the little measures that we can do. That if we were to get another fire and those same winds and we were to get those embers. And nothing is a hundred percent, it's better than nothing to prevent that home ignition. To give that time for folks to get out and the firefighters get in there. Cause once a ho- one home starts and the next one goes, it really starts overwhelming our resources, right? And the water and all that stuff. So it's extremely important.
How many uh folks have applied and received those grants, you know?
I think last year we had, I don't have that number. It it gangbusters.
Yeah, is that data available publicly?
We're going to make that data available.
Okay, yeah, I think that's good.
And and we're hoping, we we're thinking we're gonna double it, so we doubled the budget for that, right? We only had a little bit or or a little bit allocated to that and we went, wow. This was, this was, you know, did it have kinks? Yes, but for the most part, for the first year. It it was, it went very well.
I mean, others here may have some suggestion about it. I would seem to me trying to get data for each of the cities and towns. And um i- if if possible, kind of where. Uh, people are, is it just on the periphery of towns?
We had a lot of Western folks. Take advantage of it, but I think we also had some folks in the east take advantage of it. And that's why it, again, at at that local level promoting those things is extremely important. The program's there, the service is there, it's really easy. So really talking it up and and directing people to wildfirepartners.org. We've got on-call people that answer questions and and then we've got our outreach and education folks that are promoting that too. That's part of that community planning. One person screening their vents is not gonna do much, right?
Um, other questions? Fireboard? And the chief, do you have some questions?
The only. Yeah, the the only thing I would say is that with with the five hundred dollar uh program. rebate program, I I know that some of us were having some difficulty in get in receiving the. The monies. Um, and I also thought that uh some of the. Uh, what they were requesting in terms of was a little over. Over the top in terms of. Having to uh do so many like three sixty pictures of of your house. Cause I know that's what I I did and and uh so it it is, it's it's a. They, I think they could maybe uh simplify it is of what I'm trying to say.
Well taken. We knew there were some issues. We have a third party running that payment out, the reimbursement out to the. The homeowner, so you know, public input is e- extremely important to hear where you were having issues. I'll jot that down. But I'll jot that down, right? We knew there were people having some hard times uploading. And they had to be uh pictures and so it sounds like it might have been a little onerous.
I I think the the yeah, the only other comment I would make about that is that. Once you make the application and then you take all the time to to do all the requirements. Then sometimes what hap- what ended up happening is you'd go beyond the expiration. Uh, of of the um, the period of of that particular period. And then you'd have to reapply again, so it got a little bit. A little convoluted is what I'm trying to say.
And and being, you know, appreciate it. This is what we need, this is what we need to hear. And I know our our folks are aware that there were problems the first year, right? And so I know they're working real hard with uh that that third-party folk to to hopefully improve it, right? So that's great.
Um, I wanna thank you. For and I I'm not sure we're quite ready for you to to um take your leave because I think.
That's fine.
I think our chief may have some stuff to add, is that what you'd like?
Do you have a?
There might be some follow-up, yeah.
There you go. There you go.
Um, well, we had a couple. Leave, we can uh keep it going. I'll be back.
Cool. Well, I've only got four slides, uh so it will be uh kind of short, uh so. Uh, let me see if I can figure out how to do this. There it is. Um, so just a quick uh outlay or kind of outline of our district, basically. We have forty-two career staff, meaning that those are the firefighters, paramedics that are on the engines and ambulances and so on. Um, I have six volunteers, so we are a combination department still. Uh, we're not all career. Uh, when I first joined uh Lewisville Fire in two thousand twelve, it was mostly volunteer, supported by a very few career. And we have switched it and now it's a more of a career department moving to a uh or moving away from the volunteer program. I have seven support staff in two thousand twenty-five, um, meaning that that sports staff or myself, my assistant chief. Uh, I have a couple of admin staff, uh and HR, uh so we have everything that the city has. So I have my own attorneys, I have my own um accounting and and so on. Um, on a a normal day, I have eleven people on mandatory. I always will have eleven people on. That will staff two engines and two ambulances and one supervisor, which we call a battalion chief. Um, our mill levy is ten point five eight six, um and on a little note underneath it. Uh, states that we're the seventh lowest of the nineteen fire districts that are in Boulder County. And when she talked about uh districts that have a CWPP, uh of the nineteen. Um, most of them are up in the hills or up in the mountains. And so that's why they had the CWPP uh program and we did not on the eastern kind of slope or eastern portion of the county. Uh, but it's changing. Um, Mountain View is one of them on the eastern portion of the county. But they have such a wide uh variety of of geographic areas that they cover. They cover from Meade all the way up to Flagstaff, so they have a huge area, they surround me a little bit. Um, but uh they incorporated Rocky Mountain Fire Protection District, they kind of joined basically. Rocky Mountain did have one, cause they have Flagstaff, so Mountain View decided to do an overall one to go along with the county one. Um, my twenty-five budget basically is fourteen point eight six. I started thinking about that and it's like, well, wait a minute. Uh, cause everyone's gonna freak out. Um, that's capital included. So it's about a ten million dollar operation with about four million capital. A lot of that uh goes to uh my rainy day account. Uh, to build a fire station probably in Redtail. Uh, to buy in two thousand twenty-seven a two point one fire truck, ladder truck. Uh, I'm buying a a one point two million dollar fire engine this year. Along with uh some packs that we call air packs, SCBA's, uh which cost about seven thou- or seven thousand dollars each. So and I've got a a little uh kind of, and I'll, I don't have two, but it kind of shows you how much. It costs to outfit a a firefighter, uh but it also shows you uh what a type one engine might be. Uh, what a type three, what a type six, and then an ambulance and a tender. Um, and a ladder truck, so and I'll I'll pass these things around so you guys can kind of look at them. Start one on the side. Uh, nine-one-one calls for twenty twenty-four, we ran about three thousand seven hundred fourteen. Training hours, about eleven thousand eight hundred fifty-eight hours, uh combined all of us. Uh, all volunteers, just our volunteers, put in three hundred. Uh, three thousand, sorry, three thousand six hundred twenty-four, a- and that was just eight of them. And now I'm down to six, so that's going to probably shrink a little bit more. So do you have a question?
So for your nine-one-one calls, does that include like the non-emergency line as well? That can be routed to you all?
It it it, we don't get too many, most of our calls are all emergencies. Uh, we do have a few that, hey, my smoke alarm's going off, can you come change the batteries? Sure, absolutely, we'll be right there. Uh, but most of it, like I I smell something or I see something, we get called out, we find out that it's nothing. And we usually call that a good intent call, um and a lot of our calls are are made of that. And I I'd like to recommend or like to um also um. Mention the report, I believe that uh city manager Fox sent out to all of you is my annual report. Uh, that broke down all of the calls um and so on 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 that, so, okay? Uh, next slide. Go to the next slide, there it is. So our twenty twenty-five priorities, um so as we looked at the CWPP, I wanted to see. The reason why we don't have one currently is I wanted to see what the county one looked like and how, what kind of recommendations. They were gonna come up with, what recommendations we were gonna come up with. Now that we have that, uh what I felt, uh I had a lot of good suggestions from the citizens of Lewisville to say, hey. We need to expand uh the one that the city started. So the city started it. I mean, they started a a wildfire risk assessment, uh and and so you really started the ball rolling. And so what I'm trying to do with the fire district is to expand that. And what I'm gonna try to expand that is is to conclude the whole city itself. And we're gonna look at neighborhoods at a high, very high level, cause each neighborhood in the city are a little bit different. Uh, some bought up against uh open space, some are on Main Street, some are uh near Redtail. I mean, it it varies quite a bit. I wanna look about defensible space that you mentioned a little bit and and uh see what we can do. What kind of recommendations uh uh we'll come up with from those. We're gonna look at ember scattering and ember casting, basically. To see how far into the city with so many uh so many miles an hour winds, what's that gonna look like? And where should we really try to protect our our city uh from the embers getting into there? Um, we're also going to um just take the whole, everything that you've done, come up with recommendations. And then I'll be back here uh to show those recommendations. Now, I'm not gonna do this in in a um, uh what's the call, what do they call that? Uh envelope, not an envelope, uh vacuum, vacuum. I'm not gonna do it in a vacuum. I'm going to have city staff help me, I'm gonna have citizens help me, we're all going to do this together. So all the answers, not all the answers, but and not all the questions will be answered, but at least things that I don't think of. Cause I think of more black and white, uh I need to get vehicles on the road to make sure that emergency takes is taken care of. Uh, that's the traditional fire service, uh but we're doing more and more about mitigation. Hey, what can we do to prevent these things from happening? And we call it risk reduction. And so we're gonna take a a a a high, a good step forward. I took your lead um consultant that did your WRA. And I told them I I I need to expand it, we're gonna try to do this uh and come up with some recommendations. And they reached out to a professor at CSU uh that is really into us, into this stuff. And so he's gonna help out too. I've got a meeting with all of them next week, uh so we're gonna try to expand it and move forward. My timeline probably be around August, September, October, so it's gonna take a little while. But uh I I'm I I can't, I can't think of all the questions quite yet, so that's why it's going to take a little bit of while to to get that there, so.
Chief, just one question about that. Are you talking about getting the um, the questions ready to? Um, to be answered, or are you talking about they're getting their response, the consultants?
A little of both. Um, I I can't, I can't think of all the questions that the the citizens have, the city council has, the city staff has. So we'll probably try to reach out to everyone to say, hey, if you have some questions, I'll give you a kind of a draft form, probably. What we're doing and what we're looking for and then ask for your input, so, okay? Uh, we're providing um updated firefighter medical equipment. Uh, individual onsite wildfire home assessments, that's the uh wildfire partners program. We just took it and we're doing it also in the city. Uh, we need to support uh the C, the Boulder County on all hazards, emergencies, including new technology. I know that I've heard some comments about the batteries and what are we doing with those? And uh that's kind of a challenge, cause technology is so far ahead. Uh, they're not thinking about, hey, what happens if this thing catches on fire? Uh, so we're playing catch-up right now. And so the nice thing about it is we're not like New York City that has one almost every day. Uh, but we have had a few here in Lewisville, we've had a few in Erie and and the surrounding areas, so. Uh, but we're all in the fire service, trying to get our heads around this and trying to come up with things. Well, currently we have uh a blanket that will go over these items. Uh, if it's small enough, it'll go into over a drum, over uh not over cast drum, over stuffed uh drum, basically. And then it will be disposed of in the Boulder County hazmat um site. Um, if it's a car, then we'll put the blanket over it, uh make sure that the tow company knows where it's going to be going. And and cause it it most likely will catch on fire again, even with this blanket over it, so it's uh quite the challenge. And then just be a pro- uh a model of providing customer service. And then uh you will see some uh work around our station two, which was in the fire environment. Uh, during the fire marsh- uh marshal fire. And so uh I've fended out some trees currently. Uh, my next step is to take the wooden redwood ties out. And put in uh better walls and then from there. And then from there, we're doing landscaping. So we're taking all the grass out in front. And I'm not sure if I have to get this okay through the city yet or not. I'll have to talk to Rob about that. But what I'm going to try to do is plant plants, I'm going to plant plants, yeah, plant plants from CSU's list of really good plants to have around your house. And we're going to have little signs to say, this is the, this is the plant that you need to look at. So we'll probably try to put more pea gravel and that sort of stuff around there too. So that's our goal is to be kind of a, an example. And actually, I can't take the credit for this. Lafayette did it already, so I'm just stealing their idea and expanding it. So. I think.
I have a question for you, Chief. When it comes to the fire station number two?
Sure.
Like, we, like on the day of the fire, we did see a lot of firefighters needed to actually go to defend the fire station instead of the properties around that day because the, the grasses were burning and had caught fire. I actually saw it myself with my own eyes. That's the reason I know this. It wasn't just hearsay. So my curiosity is, and I love this idea of changing out the, the trees and the, the road railroad ties. What about the grassland that is surrounding the fire department that puts a lot of homes at risk if it catches fire?
I only own a little bit of it. In fact, my neighbor, Ann.
One of the reasons I said it.
So I only own a little bit of it, basically. So from our firehouse to cornerstone, basically, we own that property. We do some mowing basically to get a wide berth to cut down the fuel a little bit. I'm going to put five feet away from the firehouse, but that doesn't help the, the rest of the, of the community. It's just probably things that we'll look at, maybe expand the mowing a little bit. That day, basically, it was kind of a little bit of a command post for just Lewisville a little bit. So that's why, and my firefighters love kind of hanging out there a little bit. So. I do, I, and I'll be honest, I had a couple of people take garden hose and they ran out to, to put out the fire. I saw, I was sitting on the pad that day and I saw the fire come right across our property. So it's like, ooh, okay. And luckily, most of my building is brick and, and Class A roofs and have double pane windows and, because I just remodeled. So I did all the right things. The one thing I didn't do is cover the vents, but I will be, we'll be doing that, just like everyone else is doing. So. But yeah, we'll be thinking about what we can do and maybe I'll tag into this assessment to give me some ideas too.
That would be awesome. Because I was going to say, I knew that that's one of the areas with the city because it's a combination of open space and un-irrigated parkland and your space. It's a really complicated piece of open space or like of area with grasses as far as who mitigates, when, where, and how much. And I think what we saw with homes on both sides and, and like also like both ends, getting everybody on board to work together on, like at the same time to make sure that that is much less likely to ever burn again would be, I think it would help the residents feel so much more comfortable and confident in knowing it's safer. Thank you.
Questions for?
Just one more couple of things real quick. On March 13th, at the Community Center in Superior is going to be, the sheriff is going to be with their wildland team and they're going to talk about prescribed fire because really that's one of the things that we're really trying to get into Boulder County. Along with that, we will be doing a demonstration on some tools and some training, just a very high level about what kind of training would give them to defend their, their, their house a little bit. So that's moving forward also. So with help with Marshall together.
Where and when again?
March 13th, 5:30 at the Superior Community Center. I, I think it's 5:30 for the tool demonstration, Mountain View ourselves and Marshall together. And then the sheriff will kick it off at 6 o'clock to talk about prescribed fire. Because they tried to do a little bit of prescribed fire to the west of here and it made a lot of people nervous. So we're trying to educate as much as we can to see if we can do it. I mean, maybe the, everyone will come together and say, no, we don't want it. And I hope it's not that way. I have, I think it's a really good way of trying to do some mitigation.
I think another, if anybody is interested, we know this, but maybe other people don't, is that on the 22nd at 3:30 in the cornerstone neighborhood, they're going to have celebration, I think, of firewise designation. I have it listed as a ribbon cutting. I, I, I don't know that that's the way it's going to work or not, but. Is there? All right. Well, there it is. And invite people to that.
One, one more item to throw on your plates a little bit. And that is, in September, my position will be starting to be interviewed. And so the city is going to be invited to be part of the selection for the next fire chief. My last day is 31st of December this year. So.
We will miss you a lot.
You're probably, you're probably saying, I don't matter. Don't let the door hit you on the way out.
Yeah, you get roasted plenty between now and then.
Especially from the cops.
Yes.
I, I have a question.
Sure.
So if your fire alarms go off at 3:00 in the morning, are you going to come change the batteries for me?
If you live in the city of Lewisville, you bet.
Only go off at 3:00 in the morning.
Yeah, I know that. I know that. So do mine. One other thing is my president of my board is online. So he did make it. My other three are MIA, so I'm not sure where they're at. But I do have one here that represents us, so I'll let him chime in if he wants. It's on, it was on already.
Already on, okay. There, there was just a couple of things that the chief's already hit, hit on, but I, I think a couple of things that I'm, I'm really proud of that we've gotten going is the home assessments. I think that was really a huge, a huge thing that we got started finally. And I would just encourage the city to make that as widely known as possible. Because I would really like to see that kind of, that, that just to have people throughout the city take, take a, take a moment or two to do a home assessment. And once again, it's, I know that in some case, in some ways, people feel a little sheepish about doing it, or maybe they just, they really don't want somebody invading, invading their space. But I, I, I would hope that people would just see it as a way to, as a tool to kind of help them identify things and prioritize things that they may want to take a look at in the future. The other, other thing is that the chief mentioned, which once again, I'm very proud of as well, is the, is the hardening of our stations. I think that we were pushing that just so that it would be a model for the rest of the community that, you know, we're not, we're not just sitting back on our hands and not doing something to harden or harden the fire stations. And I think that the community is recognizing, recognizing that and, and they're taking action as well. So I, I think those are a couple of, couple of really key things that I think we've, we've done in terms of the, just in terms of wildfire resilience and mitigation of our, of our own stations. And other than that, that's really all I have to say. And I want to thank you for inviting us tonight.
I wanted to get a little bit of feedback on our work plan for a few minutes. We're kind of putting you a little bit on the spot, but I have, if I can get a a hookup to your system over there. Do you have a way of? I just have a picture. Just a photo of that page.
While you're doing that, can I ask one question of the chief? I've heard that there's been some discussion about whether or not we should utilize, purchase and utilize robotic fire control burn robots, I guess they are. And what's your opinion of them?
Yeah, I don't want to steal the city's thunder basically, because that's really, you guys brought it out, brought it up. They were applying for a grant. And I hoping that they got the grant. Do you know yet?
We are in the process. Yes, we've actually, we're a little bit outing ourselves here. We're moving forward in the process. We've got very good news to share.
Cool. So I didn't want to, yeah, I didn't want to, I didn't want to jump ahead a little bit, but we had a demonstration at a grassland working group that we meet quarterly, basically. And it's a very, it's a great tool. It costs a little bit, but it, it, it has very little smoke. It creates fire lines or, yeah, fire lines and fire breaks really well. So it's, it's instead of just mowing, it's burning the grass and it can do a number of items to help the environment. So, so yeah, I think it's, it's awesome. Yep.
I'll try to do this as best I can here. So there are, this is all part of our public safety priority item. And there are sort of three here, I think, that have something to do with the joint enterprise that we're meeting about tonight. Fire, fire preparedness and mitigation and so forth. You know, and I'm, I'm putting you a little bit on the spot and I don't mean to suggest that maybe you're going to have a final answer, but I would be very interested of, I think, the council would be very interested if you have some thoughts about what we've listed and, and what you might suggest is the, you know, ought to be city priorities. Maybe you would recommend maybe prioritize a little higher than some of the others. You don't have to really worry about the third column. That's more how many meetings we're going to devote. But I'll let you look at that for just a second. And then I guess I could sit down here.
So are the three main areas preparedness, WUI codes, and then potential citywide defensible spaces?
That is correct. And the, the middle column, I should have explained that a little bit. The middle column is just a more detailed description of what we have decided, or at least we're from a working document. What, what we would define preparedness and WUI code and potential citywide defensible space. Just to clarify, the council, of course, did do a hardening ordinance. You know about that because you were asked about it last night. But we did not, at that time that we passed it, go on to talk about a defensible space. That was not part of the discussion at that time. And it still is not a council. I mean, it is not a policy decision that the council has yet made. That will be coming up at some point and the council will decide whether that's important enough to take up and how. But it's on there, it's on the priority to at least address it one way or another.
So just looking at it, a couple of things. I think probably your highest priority is preparedness, I think. Because I think it's the city's responsibility, the district's responsibility, and I'm going to say it's the citizen's responsibility to be prepared. It is a team effort from all areas. And there might be some people that disagree with that, but really I think it involves everyone to be kind of on the same page, doing the right things. And a lot of that preparedness is just communication and examples like what we're trying to do with our landscaping and so, and so on. And I think that, and I don't want to push this off to the new city manager, but I think she, she probably will come in with some really good ideas, a fresh pair of eyes too. Wildland urban interface, you do have someone on that board. And I think it, at least for me, I think it's a wait and see to see how it really will start to affect the, the city. Now, I think the city's going to have to expand it some more because I think just like the CWP, Boulder, Boulder County CWPP, it's a very high level. I think the WUI code is a very high level too, just because, and it's a very difficult code because you go from the western slope to the eastern, eastern plains to the north or the middle where the Rockies are. I mean, it is a huge dramatic landscaping that you're trying to get a lot of codes, kind of like overall umbrella on all of those. And I'm sure that Rob can probably talk some more about that, or he has already. And then the potential citywide defensible space, I think that's why I, I kind of went forward with our expanding the city's WRA to include defensible space. And so I'm waiting for some more experts. I'm not an expert in all this. We're a jack of all trades and experts of none, basically. So, so that's why we have consultants. That's why we have experts that we reach out to ask their recommendations after they see the data.
Peter's tired, but just at the right time, I think, probably. Do council members have questions around the, the work plan? The discussion that the, thank you, chief, for that. Very helpful. Yes, Councilmember Kern.
So it sounds like, and I actually want to say thank you for like putting a lot of work on your final eight or 10 months of, of your calendar year of your career. And thank you for putting this much work into Lewisville. We really appreciate it and we're really going to miss you. I will miss you. But given that the fire district is going to be working on a new risk assessment, I think it is worth the council's time and should be on our calendar for, you know, very soon. So as, as the chief gets closer to having it ready, whether that's late summer, early fall, we're ready to read it, listen to his suggestions and be actionable. Not just wait a whole nother year before we take action. But I think if we can get something set as we dedicated a few items on here, we can take his recommendations and implement them really quickly. I think that one, it'll validate the work he's doing for the community. And since we're going to have so much community involvement, I think that the residents would appreciate also having those things put into action sooner rather than later.
Other comments?
Yeah.
Maybe it's a question for you and Samma. Looking at the preparedness particularly category, do we have a sense yet for what other like specific agenda items might come up in the, in the year, like study sessions or anything like that? I mean, we, we've done some already clearly, but I'm wondering if we have anything definite in mind yet.
Just real briefly, I know that some of us were with the ambassador program. And I know that, once again, I think maybe just. And I know that, once again, I think maybe just revisiting that program would be, would be helpful, too, is to, so that when we can encourage neighborhoods to get more involved in that. Because that's basically around preparedness, how they can be prepared as a family, as well as how they can prepare their home, making it more resilient and so forth. And it is a broader program that the county supports. So I think it would have a little more leverage by doing, by using that program, if that makes any sense. But I think it, it, it could be a good tool, again, to bring up, because I, I don't think we've really encouraged it as much as we, as much as we could. And that would help us educate people about what, what they can do.
Thank you, Larry. I know some of these are, we're, we're going to be waiting on, for example, the WUI issues. I'm trying to remember, Rob, when, when are we likely to get word from the state about what the recommendations or requirements are?
The draft code is going to be coming out in about a month. And then there's a hearing process, approval process with the final approval slated for the end of June with a July 1 deadline. So I think we'll have, and so there's the code itself, and then there's the mapping, too, and the definition of WUI. So that's all happening very fast, I'd say between now and the end of June. And then we have three months to adopt the code and then three months to implement.
So it'll probably not be before July that we'll be ready to, I mean, it'll be sometime July or August that we
Yeah, I mean, we might have an opportunity to start working on it. I don't know if we'll be working on it with council, but we'll, we'll probably be working on it leading up to that and then working with council as soon as we can on different options. But we haven't put together a schedule yet, but, but we can, we can report back with a more specific schedule if that's helpful.
Sure, thanks. I know defensible space, I mean, from my standpoint, this was an item that I pushed to, to at least cover and make a decision from a, from a council standpoint on policy. The faster the better. And we've talked a little bit in our meetings about the agenda item. I think what is going to be found in the WRA is going to be pretty important to that. So I don't know, but whether, I mean, one way of thinking about it is to wait until then to, to make the policy decision about whether to, to push forward. Another is to make the decision first and then that this is something we're interested in and is a policy matter. And then perhaps use your recommendations as a way of filling in on, on what we'd like to do. But I guess I'd like to know from council how they'd like to proceed on that, because I, you know, I think that you'd do it that way. I mean, you do either of those ways, there's probably other ways you could do it, but I'm, we can certainly expedite that as much as we're capable of. I'm not consulting staff yet, so maybe the staff has, and I, some thoughts about that?
Thank you, Mayor, yes. I, I'm sorry, I don't have my notes for all of our work plan implementation in front of me, but I do want to highlight off the top of my head. We do have a contract for communications around preparedness that's now scheduled for March 18th. We also have our Marshall Fire update, which includes a lot of our mitigation and preparedness work scheduled for May. I want to say the second meeting in May, but I'd have to confirm that. Right now, we're looking at where we can schedule some of these things. So I appreciate the conversation from the county tonight and from the fire district to learn what they're doing and how we can really collaborate on making sure that our schedule fits all of these pieces together as we go forward.
I mean, I think, well, on that issue, maybe we could probably in the meeting that we have, Mayor Potem, Mayor and the city manager, this deputy city manager, we can take that up. But it would be nice if you have some thoughts about whether to schedule that earlier or later.
Given kind of what we've heard from Meg about expanding the mitigation efforts that we've made a good start, but it, we definitely want to grow. Is this something that we want to wait for a report? Or would this be something that I think could be helpful that we get started sooner, involve Director Blackmore in this? So that the mitigation efforts that are going to be happening throughout the year could be expanded if they feel that that would be necessary? Rather than waiting till the May meeting and then maybe we lose the opportunity to expand the program?
Give some thoughts about that, maybe?
Well, I have a question when you're talking citywide defensible space. Define that of what you're thinking.
Fall back on the, at least by very, very thumbnail. I'm not an expert on this, but the sort of five feet around the perimeter of the, of homes and, and what kinds of things that homeowners can do and to what extent we want to make those mandatory and, yeah.
My two senses. You know, there's a lot about defensible space out there and, and it should be consistent with what other jurisdictions the county is doing. And I know you're probably aware of that. And again, considering with the risk assessment that you're going to expand is, is really tapping it on there at a community level, right? Yeah, and, and then you're considering making it mandatory. Is that what you're, yeah, okay.
At any rate, we don't have to make that decision around the table right now. I just wanted to get any input that you all have and if you have input in your meetings, your board meetings. I encourage you to, you know, provide that. I mean, it may make some sense to wait until you've done your assessment, but I, I'm still rolling around, rounding in my mind about what the best time is to do that. We just made a decision to address the issue as to whether we're going to go forward. And we haven't made that decision just yet. I think that's helpful. There's not much more that we need on that. So thank you very much for enlightening us and helping us understand some of these issues, because one of the things that I know we get criticized for at times is not getting enough information and learning from experts. And you are definitely that, and as is the fire district and the chief of the board. So with that, I think we, why don't we take a very brief, maybe five minute break? But thanks again. And we will, we'll have time to shed tears later over your departure. Thanks. Welcome, Jeff. The floor is yours.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm Jeff Wilson, I'm with, oh, where'd it go? There it is. I'm with Wilson Williams Feldman Ditman, a Lewisville business. We're just down the street here on Main Street. And I've been doing this my whole life and I'm delighted to be here this evening. You've already had an extremely long work session, I've done a lot of these, so I'm going to go like the wind and get you guys out of here fast. Kathleen asked me to briefly hit on a couple of your charter provisions having to do with open meetings and open records before I get into the conflict of interest stuff, so I'm going to do that real quick. The two sections of your charter that precede the ethics and openness and government sections, section 5.1 and 5.5, 5.1 to 5.4 deal with open meetings and section 5.5 deals with open records. The, both of these sections supplement, but don't displace state law. For example, the, the open meeting section of your charter only deals with executive sessions, doesn't deal with anything else. So the open meetings law applies and the main aspects of the open meetings law that I'll go over are openness, notice of minutes. There's the rule of three and four in this area. If there are three members in, involved in a meeting, that's an open meeting. A meeting is any kind of gathering to discuss public business. So three of you involved in a get together where you're not talking about public business, don't worry about the open meetings law. But if you're talking about public business, the gathering of three is open. If a majority or quorum are in attendance or expected to be in attendance at a meeting, and it's the expected to be in attendance, then prior full and timely notice has to be given. The city clerk probably has a mechanism for delivering full and timely notice in compliance with the law, so that's just what you need to remember. I used to get calls all the time at the municipal league about, geez, do we have to notice this meeting or notice that meeting? My attitude is it takes no effort to notice a meeting, just notice the damn thing. You don't get in trouble for over noticing, you get in trouble for under noticing, so just notice everything is my attitude. The executive session portions of your charter or section 5.2, they are, you have a statute for going into executive session. So your process things are covered. The process for going into an executive session here in Lewisville is similar, but not the same as the state, particularly with respect to the announcements that are made before going into the executive session. You need a two thirds vote here, just like you do under state law. But the, another significant difference in Lewisville is that the reasons for which you can go into executive session are much, much more narrow than under state law, far more restricted. So, and I'm sure you're familiar with those, I have it here, I was going to read them to you. Oh, here we go. Confidential info, information required to be confident, kept confidential under state or federal law, you can talk about that in executive session. You can do, deal with personnel matters involving council direct reports. You can, other, other city councils are not limited to direct reports, they can talk about all kinds of other people. Water rights and property acquisitions, but only as to appraisal and value estimates and to develop strategy for acquisition and disposition. Other cities are not limited like that in terms of talking about real property acquisition and disposition. Finally, you can talk to your attorney about matters in pending litigation. Also far more narrow than the authority in most of my other cities, where the council has authority to talk to the attorney about a variety of other sorts of exposures. That's my quick and dirty on open meetings. Open records, section 5.5 of your charter, the charter has a bunch of little details in it about how much fees you can charge and how much to charge for copies and stuff like this. What's notably absent from your, from your code provision, your charter provisions is the stuff that's in the Open Records Act at the state level, like how much time do you have to produce records if a request is filed? So this is where you fall back on state law, you have three days. You can have up to seven additional days if extenuating circumstances apply. This is not the kind of stuff you guys on council have to worry about. I'm just explaining the neighborhood. Significant, a significant omission from your charter is you, charter doesn't say what a public record is. So you have to go So you have to go to state law to find out what a public record is. A public record is basically a writing made, maintained, or kept by the government concerning public business. Those are two elements, made, maintained, or kept, and concerning public business. Cora as a law requires that most public records be disclosed, but it makes it against the law to reduce, to release other kinds of records. So it's one of these statutes that says you shall release and you shall not release. And I've had situations where I've had angry parties on both sides about whether we release or don't release records. So this is all something your attorneys and the clerk worry about though. What, what I always tell council members, especially newly elected, who I end up doing trainings for, is that oops, I left my phone back there, my prop. Your phone calls, your private, the phone calls on your private technology are public records if they concern public business. So we're always having to produce text messages from people's private phones, emails from people's private computers. Why? Because it's a discussion involving public businesses when the scope of the Open Records Act. The Supreme Court has said expressly that the, who owns the equipment on which the public record is found is not relevant. It's a, it's a content determination to decide if something's a public record. So don't say anything in a text or an email that you don't want to see on the front page of the newspaper. That's my takeaway on the Open Records Act. Now, told you I was gonna go like the wind. Now onto this part of your charter. I did this PowerPoint in part because Lewisville's charter is more complicated than your average home rule charter in this area. My longtime friend Kathleen asked me to do this presentation and of course I said, sure, because it was Kathleen. And then a minute later, I thought, I called her back. I said, wasn't Lewisville that place where they adopted all that really complicated stuff in 2009? And Kathleen always solicitous said to me, yeah, it's too late. You already agreed. So here I am. It's actually not that complicated. Once I dug into it, the your code ethics is not so different than state law. It's located in these sections of the charter. It's very detailed, however, like I said. And so it, there's probably a decent argument that the provisions in your charter displace the state law in terms of the areas that are discussed. So you probably occupy the field here. And so I think that's a decision for you to, for Kathleen to talk to you about. But probably this, this provision of your charter is a good thing to focus on. Before getting into the particulars, most normal people can't remember the specifics of various ethics codes in the state public officials code of ethics, but you can remember the policy behind these laws. It's very basic. You have a duty to serve the public interest. These laws are intended to address situations where private interests could interfere with your public responsibilities. The foundation value behind all these laws is you shouldn't use your public position to feather your own nest financially or your family or your business. Lewisville's law, like most conflict laws, has a self policing aspect and extension from voting rule that is common throughout the state law, and I'll get to in a second. And then has prohibitions on specific conduct. These laws are popular with the public. Pay attention to the letter of the law and the spirit of the law and obey the spirit of the law. Couple of critical definitions drive a lot of what happens in these conflict of interest laws. And Lewisville's is no exception. Interest means a pecuniary property or commercial benefit or other benefit. The, and here's the important part to me, the primary, primary significance of which is economic gain or the avoidance of economic loss. So that's, that's when, what an interest is. That's when you have an interest. Notice of the qualifier, any matter in which it doesn't include something where your benefit or your interest is similar to that conferred on a person's or property similarly situated. The example I use here, there's a million of them. Say you have a, you have a business on Main Street and city council is considering a rebate program for facial improvements on your business. Can you vote on that? Yes, because you were probably elected to council as a Main Street business person and your interests are reflective of a group of people similarly situated on your council. Now, if the facial improvements were limited to ice cream stores and you ran the only ice cream store on Main Street, of course you would have stayed because it would be a special and particular ice benefit. This one will come up later. Just the thing to notice about the definition of relative in your conflict of interest charter provisions is how broad it is. It's like everybody. Okay. And I'll talk to you about the significance of that later. It's not just your interests, however, that are implicated and, and that drive this rule. It's your notice of code says an interest of the following persons shall constitute an interest of you guys. Your interests can include the interests of any relative, that big broad definition. I just, your relative owns a business, that's covered. Any business entity in which the council member is officer director employee partner, blah, blah, blah. Any business entity in which the council member only owns or controls more than one percent of the shares of stock. And then any business entity in which the officer is seeking to advance its financial benefits through an official action, et cetera, et cetera. Extra credit for anybody that can distinguish between number two and number four. I think number four is completely subsumed into number one. And worrying about things like that is why I'll be living at the state mental hospital with Webbo here in a couple of years. Cause okay, one other thing. I described all these interests. You continue to have an interest even when you don't. Just check out your charter. You continue, you shall be deemed to continue to have one of these very broad interests in a business entity for a period of one year after your actual interest has ceased. So you still have an interest even when you don't. Here's the big rule in every conflict of interest provision. It's the disclosure and abstention rule. This is found in state law. This is found in every charter. If you have any interest that would be affected by any proposed official action. And this includes, your interest can include the interest of a competitor to your business. That's the economic damage part of that definition earlier. Then what you do is you immediately and publicly disclose the nature of your conflict. You don't participate in A, any discussion or B, decision. So you don't vote. You don't talk about it and you don't vote concerning the proposed action. And then this is it varies from city to city, but here in Lewisville, the person who's conflicted actually leaves the room. Some places if you can stay in the room and just shut up, don't try and influence anybody, that's fine. But here in Lewisville, the charter tells you to leave the room. The charter also continues, says a council member shall not participate in any discussion with the city council concerning the action. Well, isn't that a lot like number two up above? Well, what this means is you won't do it out of the council meeting. Okay, the first three are what you do in the meeting. Disclose, abstain, and don't vote. Don't try and influence anyone. Outside of the meeting, you also don't try and influence people on the decision in which you have a conflict. And you don't attempt to influence the next bullet publicly or privately. An attempt to influence means get your friend to talk to somebody on council. You know, use an agent, screw around, try and get cute. One thing I always tell, say when I'm talking about this stuff is the clever ones amongst you will discover there are all kinds of legal ways to look really stupid on the front page of the newspaper. Under these ethics laws, there's ways to do stuff, which is what I mean. Think about the purpose of these laws. Just because there's the legal, there's the law, and then they're smart, you know? Okay, your code had that. That was the general disclosure and abstention rule that I just went through. And then, as I promised, there are other specific prohibitions on particular types of conduct or situations where a conflict may arise. And I'm gonna go through them really quickly here and I paraphrase them. If you guys, you know, want to go to sleep easier at night, put a copy of this section of the charter by the bed, read it and internalize these. First restriction, it's on contracts. Best thing is to not have any interest in any contract with the city. Not have your relatives have any interest in the contract with the city, no interest at all in any contract with the city. If that's what you've got, you're good. You don't really have to, don't worry about this section. But if you do have that kind of situation, pay attention to this slide. You can't have an interest in a contract as a council member unless you go through the disclosure and abstention provision that I just described, that process. You can't appear before the council on behalf of a business entity in which you have an interest. You can't solicit or accept employment with a business entity that contracts with the city if the, if such acts result or relate to some official action that you took. And let me just interpose here, you know, do you need the law to tell you this stuff? You know, I mean, this is the thing. If you need the law to tell you not to do these things, you've got a bigger problem with a moral compass, in my opinion. These things should be obvious. And the good news is, I've been doing this for 40 years. I hardly ever see city council people get in trouble under these restrictions because most people have a basic moral compass. It makes them ask the, a city attorney before they, like solicit, accept, or be granted a present or future gift by a government contractor. Really? Good thing the law says you shouldn't solicit a gift from a government contractor. There's now a provision in the state law, by the way, that says you can't have a government contractor do an independent, a separate job for you while they're a contractor with the government. The reason that's in the state law is because a bunch of Adams County commissioners a few years ago got their driveways paved by the county's pavement contractor. Apparently it didn't occur to them that it might have been a problem, but I've given you guys all more credit than that. Okay, nepotism. Here's a kind of conflict of interest that isn't pecuniary. Yes. Go ahead. Okay.
I have a current conflict interest that I'll appear to myself over and over again. But I was under the impression, so it says not appear before council on behalf of such business entity. And so by reading that, it would appear that I could appear before the LRC or the HCC or the county commissioner, but all those things just not council. I was, I am acting currently under, like, I will not, I will not represent myself in any of the, of any, not just.
Kathleen's your attorney. I'm not. That'd be my advice though. I'm very conservative on this stuff. We live in a time of great suspicion and concern about the integrity of any form of government. You know, so I'm higher on the side of avoiding the appearance of impropriety as well as the fact. And so I'd say it applies to all of those entities, but talk to your real attorney. Okay. Yeah, okay. Okay. All right. Here's another, here's a kind of conflict that isn't measured in money, nepotism. And this is another one where, geez Louise, you know, if you don't help your relative, if you ever, don't, you don't, you shouldn't have a relative working for the city. If you do have a relative working for the city, you have nothing to do with it. You shouldn't be concerned about whether they get a pay increase, what their conditions of work are, none of that. And you shouldn't need the law to tell you that either. It's a council manager form of government, for one thing. So you shouldn't influence the hiring, appointment, retention, supervision, compensation, benefits, or terms and conditions of municipal employment of your relatives. Stick. Don't use information that you get as part of your city council job to benefit your, you know, nest financially. I've seen other counts, other conflicts and provisions in charters that specifically call out things here like, you know, if you find out the city's looking at buying a piece of real estate, don't rush right over there and buy it yourself. I've never, fortunately, I've never seen this provision violated either. Okay, the, sort of the central part of the council manager form of government is the council, city, the employees work for the city manager and the council is supposed to tell the employees what to do. Many count, many charters have a, a provision like you do here at section eight point five B and C. First in the, in the, or in the conflicts law, it says you show, you won't request or direct the work of city employees. Then in your, elsewhere in your charter, it says council members won't dictate or interfere with the duties of employees and so on and so forth. Prevent or interfere with the exercise of judgment and the performance of the employees' duties. Then there's this problem here that this thing, that council members may discuss city operations with city employees, but not give direct orders. Okay? Here's the kind of stuff I've run into. I'm not giving you a direct order, but I want to ask you some questions. Why didn't you plow the street in front of my house? That's not a direct order, but it sure might seem like that if you're a plow driver for the city. So you see how, you know, this is an example of following the spirit as well as the letter. You know, you could, you could have, let's see, I keep up with my notes here, a common a common area here, one area that council members get in, get into trouble a lot here is in preparation of the packet for council meetings. Hey, include this, you know, I'm, I'm really in favor of this given ordinance. We're gonna be talking about it next meeting. So hey, staff, would you make sure to include this, 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 and this in the packet, you know, or don't include this, this, and this is even more pernicious. So that's another way of influencing the judgment of city employees is by leaning on them or asking questions or influencing the sharing of information or including information in the packet. So watch out for that. I say here, watch, you know, the discussion, that's the, hey, why haven't you plowed the street where I live question? This, this prohibition is also found in state law. It's very well established. Okay, revolving door prohibitions, another common feature of conflicts, ethics laws. For two years after you leave council, you can't appear before the city council in connection with something in what, in connection with which you took an official act while you were on city council. That makes sense. Something starts while you're on city council, you're involved in the creation of the, of the program and you have a lot of input. You're not supposed to come back within two years of being on city council and testify on something in relation to a matter concerning which you performed an official act. If you appear on behalf of your own interests or somebody else's interest apart from the little eye there, you have to disclose your prior relationship that used to be on the city council and what your current relationship is to the interest in affecting what you're talking about. And for two years after leaving council, you can't be a city employee. So there you go. You get to take all those big checks you got for while you're on council and you don't get anymore. Okay, here's, there's a bunch of rules in your, in your charter about appearing before council or other public bodies while you're still on council. A council member may appear before the city council or any other public body on behalf of a business entity except where the appearance does not concern any matter that has or may come before the public body, which, which he or she is a member. Took me a minute to think of what this would be and what kind of business would that be? And I'm thinking maybe if you're a, you're an executive as in the local order of the Boy Scouts or something. Want to come and talk about what the Boy Scouts are doing in the community. This really doesn't have anything to do with anything that's gonna come before council. So there might be something like that. You can be had. You can be, you can appear before the council on behalf of any person as long as it doesn't interfere with a interest of your own. Okay, I worked for years at, working for the municipal league at the state legislature and in the state, in the state constitution, there's a prohibition on vote trading. I'll vote for your bill if you vote for my bill. You have a prohibition on that in your charter. And it's also a prohibition on influence trading. If you vote for my bill, I'll try and line up votes for you on three, three votes on this bill. See, there's a prohibition on that kind of stuff in your charter. Just know that. H, no surprise. Guess what? You can't self deal when it comes to real estate. No council member acquire, seek to acquire real estate interest. The officer knows or recently should know that the council's thinking of buying the property or something. This is a very variation on that earlier rule. Okay, this isn't in your charter, but this is something you should pay attention to. It's commonly known as amendment forty one. It's the amendment from a few years ago that created the Independent Ethics Commission where I've had more fun than I deserve. Not because of me, because of my clients. Institution article twenty nine, section three, it basically lists limits how many gifts, what kind of gift you can receive because you're on city council in a given year from a given donor. It started out at fifty bucks per year per donor. Now it's up to seventy five dollars or approximately. And I called the municipal league before doing this presentation and asked them, what is the current, the statute has the amount adjusted periodically for inflation? And it's, according to CML, the Independent Ethics Commission has set the number at seventy five bucks. The takeaway from this, there's various exceptions where you can accept gifts that are not intended for you as an individual, but maybe for the body of which you're a part, all kinds of exceptions. And there's been a ton of case law here. It's a bit of a thicket. But the takeaway is if somebody offers you something for free or, you know, for the cost, looks like it's gonna cost about seventy five dollars or more, like an avalanche ticket or something. Talk to Kathleen just to make sure, you know, because some exceptions apply. If appearing at conferences where you're gonna give a talk and they comp you on the registration, that's legal. You know, so there, there's all kinds of little, little exceptions here to pay attention to. So I just, a lot of tonight is just about issue spotting. Just so, you know, yeah. You know, so there, there's all kinds of little, little exceptions here to pay attention to. So I just, a lot of tonight is just about issue spotting. Just so, no, yeah. It might, you know, it's, it's, that occurred to me too, and I just chose to include this, you know, and, and you can have a conversation with your attorney about that. I always advise caution until you firmly, until you clearly decide you're not subject to this. So. Yeah. Okay.
That is gifts not supported by consideration. Your mother can give you, is that what?
Yes, that's. I shouldn't have used legal mumbo jumbo like consideration. My apologies. That's, yeah, there's an. Right. One of the exceptions in the amendment is a gift from a personal friend for a special occasion.
Obviously if my personal friend is coming before council next month for a big thing, that would be a, that would be a bad time.
Right. I always tell people, use the, how would it look on the front page of the newspaper test? And that's pretty good acid test.
Well, my sister took me because one of our vendors for our company gave our company two tickets to nightcap.
See, but that was.
Nothing to do.
Right.
Anything that I do versus the council.
Bingo. So that's cool. That's okay. As long as my, your real attorney agrees with me. But I think it's okay. So that's amendment forty one. Just watch out for it. Okay. Here's this, I think this last slide. There's some other stuff in your, in your code of ethics provisions in your charter, but I'm not emphasizing them tonight because they're not stuff you guys as council members really need to worry about. This first one, as you all know, you have to file a financial disclosure statement. And since you're on council, you already did this. So I don't need to talk to you about that, but know that on September tenth under the charter, by no later than that, you have to update the thing every year. So just know that. Code of ethics has an enforcement provision in it. It's a, any, any person in the community can take action, can complain against you. And if they do that, it starts a, a process where the city appoints a special prosecutor, conducts an investigation, creates a special judge and happily your code of ethics, like many of them, has a process for sorting out and getting rid of frivolous complaints because these are a big time political weapon. People file, accuse you of violations to generate the newspaper story. And then when the thing's dismissed a few weeks later, nobody pays any attention. So it's real good to have a process for getting rid of these things if they're frivolous. You may ask for an advisory opinion. If you are concerned about the interpretation of something in the charter, some of this stuff I've talked about tonight, you want to know whether it applies to you. One of your, you may talk to your city attorney. You may also write an inquiry in writing and get an opinion. Yeah. Explaining what the rules require. So, look at that eight thirty four. I'm like grease lightning. There I am. Questions. There's our, there's our office. We're right down. We got the dojo on one side and the fire station on the other and the kids playground right across the street. It's great. Can I answer any questions? I know I've probably just bludgeoned you into submission.
I don't have any questions, but I don't know that I've ever laughed during an ethics training before.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I mean, yeah, it was wonderful.
Oh, yeah? Well, I, it's maybe all those years at the Capitol. My standard line is it didn't affect me at all. So, no, I love this job. I should be retired. But now I train younger lawyers and, you know, as of yesterday, I had seven recalls going at once. Five and one, or three, eight recalls, five in one city and three in another. So this, you know, why do I keep doing this? It's, I say I have a progressive mental disorder and this is a way that I can sort of mainstream myself. Thank you so much for your attention. It's been a pleasure to be here. Thank you.
Right. I don't think we have anything else on our agenda. So do we have a motion?
Second.
On favor?
Next.